I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting of December 18th, 2024 has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk and with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk and was forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on December 13th, 2024. The regular meeting of the municipal council of the city of Bayonne is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weemer?
Here.
Mr. La Palusa?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Starting with O-1 has been withdrawn and will be reintroduced at O-13. O-2 is a bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of vehicles and equipment for the city's parking utility, appropriating $250,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $250,000 bonds or notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the city of Bayonne in the county of Hudson State of New Jersey. It was introduced and passed the first reading held November 13th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 18th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing and a resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, "A Bond Ordinance Providing for the Acquisition of Vehicles and Equipment for the City's Parking Utility, Appropriating $250,000 Million Therefore and Authorizing the Issuance of $250,000 Bonds or Notes to Finance a Portion of the Cost Thereof, Authorized in and by the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, New Jersey." The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Yes.
I have a question on that. I have a question on O.
Please state your name and address.
Sharon Nadrowski, 126 Avenue. I have a question on O-1. I realize you're reintroducing it, but once you introduce an ordinance and it's up for a second reading, you could take three actions. You know, postpone it, vote it up, or vote it down. So you can't just move it. It has, something has to be done with the ordinance. You can't reintroduce it until you, right? Isn't there only three actions you can take? Postpone it, vote it up, or vote it down. Once you've introduced it, something has to be done to it. So it needs a public, and some, before anything can happen, you have to have a public hearing.
No, no. What would happen is they could go to a, the motion to have the second hearing.
Which would allow for a public.
No public hearing, they would just say, moving, moving it for, do we have a motion to move it first, the second time, to have it heard? If it doesn't move, get moved and seconded and then voted in favor to put it up, it just dies.
Okay.
Technically speaking, I'll grant your request. Technically speaking, they should put it up and not do it, but it's just, we know we're going to come back in O-13 with a revised ordinance that was the plan all along since last week, and technically speaking, correct. But we knew it was going to die on the vine anyway. But there was, there is no requirement to have a public hearing just because it's scheduled for one, because it has to be voted on to be put out for a second.
I didn't mean to hear it, I meant a comment. You always have a comment before you could take the final.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
And actually, it's been postponed multiple times. Hasn't been second, the second reading hasn't taken place at all.
I know, I'm just, I don't understand what I meant.
All right, back to O-2.
Anybody else on O-2? No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed.
So move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
O-3 is a bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements and acquisitions of various vehicles and capital equipment, appropriating $7 million therefore and authorizing the issuance of $6,666,500 in bonds, $500 in bonds or notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson State of New Jersey. And, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held November 13th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 18th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by the council president. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, "The Bond Ordinance Providing for Various Capital Improvements, Acquisitions of Various Vehicles and Capital Equipment, Appropriating $7 Million Therefore and Authorizing the Issuance of $6,666,500 Bonds or Notes to Finance a Portion of the Cost Thereof, Authorized in and by the city of Bayonne, county of Hudson State of New Jersey." The county is now ready to give all person, council is ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
O-4 is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 33, Planning and Development Regulations, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held November 13th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 18th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing.
I may ask, um, Mr. Skender to come and just, um, give a little more information about this.
Do you want to move the resolution to second reading first?
Okay, sure. Sorry about that.
It's moved by council member Perez. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a second reading, again, is by title, "An Ordinance of the City of Bayonne Amending and Supplementing the Revised General Ordances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 33, Planning and Development Regulations." And the council is now ready, ready to recognize anyone who wishes to be, to speak.
Good evening, council. Uh, so for this ordinance, it's a, a simple update, basically that a zoning permit, if no action is taken within a year, uh, the zoning permit will expire. Uh, we're, we're asking that the council, um, you know, adopt this. Uh, this is a request from our zoning officer, Ms. Tuie, uh, in regards to the fact that we're, you know, getting some applications coming in, no action is, uh, being taken upon once they apply. Uh, so this will also help clean up, um, you know, the zoning files.
Director, can I ask you, what constitutes action? Do we have a definition? Like, for example, I, I understand there's minutia there where if they drive a nail or if they show up with a truck or is it, do we have a clarified, how we can prove?
They have, within a year, if there is no action taken, it, within the ordinance, it's not defined, it's left ambiguous. Um, it's just a one-sentence lighter that other towns have. Uh, again, we, we're finding where people, they'll pull the permit and then they won't take any action at all. So this is, again, to, you know, prohibit that, so.
All right. So essentially, if it's, if it remains flat for a year?
Yeah.
Okay. And if they go in and start something and then again, ti, that time passes and they haven't finished it, that qualifies as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
But currently, right now, if they just apply for it and they'll have it, you know, that's the, in perpetuity.
Right. So this changes that?
This changes that.
Uh, I'll second it.
Anybody else? With that, I'll take a motion to close.
Move it.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And O-5, I have a resolution postponing this ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Bayonne Amending and Supplementing the Revised General Ordances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 37, Historical Preservation," and it's postponing it to the January 15th meeting. It's moved by council member, council president La Palusa. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
O-6 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, Chapter 7, Traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held November 13th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of December 18th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by council member Perez. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, "An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Revised General Ordances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7, Traffic." The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Our first speaker is Mr. Solari.
Good evening. Tom Solari, 8 West Grand Street. A couple of questions. He's on, I know he's not going to answer them tonight. We have every day two officers babysitting at McDonald's. I feel that instead of the cops being paid because they're walking the beat, we're taking them off the beat, they sit at McDonald's. I feel it should go to overtime, let the cops get paid and the city get paid. We're not babysitters. We got 73,000 people that live in this town. We got a fire department that has to worry about that. We got the cops to worry about that. They're the best things that we have in this town. Now, you have problems on 25th and Broadway. You's all voted for a building 200 yards, 300 yards up the block.
Correction. All but one.
All but one. You, where the guy, where the gentleman's going to put a rec center. You have problems on 25th and Broadway. What makes you think that problem on Broadway is not going to go up the block? That building shouldn't even be put in a rec center. It's privately owned. Is the city paying that owner rent for that rec center? That's, that's, that issue's over. No, it's not. The other one, we have Big Development Down, the MOT. Chosen Few. Get in touch with the turnpike. Put turnpike signs at Chosen Few and Goldsburg Drive. Make the left go down Chosen Few to go to the turnpike. Because everybody's going from down the block all the way up to 440 to make a right turn, you got traffic going all the way down, back down to the ship. Today, I witnessed three cars, one of them was mine, that almost got head-on by some moron coming across the yellow line. This is where public works should be going down there, put delineators from the driveway of Cho, of Costco, all the way down to 440. So they, once they go over that line, they can get back in. Also, they got cars going down the right side, cutting off cars to go left. I says, we have nothing but problems down there. You got people coming out of Costco, shooting a cross to go to Lidl, Starbucks, or CVS. Then you got people making lefts out of, uh, CVS to go to 440. I could, I can imagine the police department with the amount of accidents listed, they got there. Because I know last month, there had to be at least two or three of them. Is the city waiting for something fatal to happen before they put, get a traffic light put? Don't ask yet, guy.
I'm not answering.
Because I can see you, you're ready to think.
I, I, and when you're done.
But it's getting really, it's getting really bad down there. Somebody's going to get killed and I don't want to come back here and say, oh, I came back here on Dec, in December and told yous about it, but yous waited for somebody to get killed to do something. That intersection at Chosen Few and Goldsburg should have a traffic light up before any of these buildings even went in, because yous knew what the traffic, the traffic study was. I don't know what profession yous had down there, but you can imagine, at that time, it was probably, the traffic flow was probably low. Now you got KRE has three of his buildings up, over 600 and something store, uh, units. Now you got, the townhouse is down the block. You got the buildings. You got the tavern on the Hudson. It's all generating traffic. Now you got another high-rise is getting put up. You's also voted for a 50-story building.
Correction.
Except for one. Good job. You know, you don't see none of this happening down in God's country. Yeah, you got, figured you like that, Neil. But the thing is, you's got to do something with Chosen Few and Goldsburg. Because if I get, if I get into an accident and I know the city knows about the problems, they ain't doing nothing about it, we're going to court. And Jay, he's, he's going to get all the paperwork. Sorry, Jay. But, you know, my brother's starting to come out at me. So the thing is, you's got to take care of the problem before somebody gets hurt, because I'm going to be the one to tell yous I told you so. All right? Thank you.
You're done?
Yeah.
All right, so, so I'm not answering your question, but pretty much all day long, I've had conversations with a whole bunch of people. This is not back and forth.
But it's also on multimedia. You follow Facebook, you'll see it.
Tommy, you got to go back to your seat and let me address this my way. Okay? So I'm going to ask, um, Sue, our planner, to come up, because I've had many discussions with her, and as far as you saying nothing being done, there's plenty being done. So you're going to hear some about that now.
Hi, it's nice to see you.
This is Sue Mack, our planner.
Good evening.
She's an expert with all that down the base.
Yeah. I, thank you, council president. It's very kind of you to acknowledge me as your planner. I also am, you know, as planners, you get certification, so I'm, I'm a certified transportation planner. I'm also a fellow in the Institute of Traffic Engineers. So I always care about traffic and transportation. It's, it's just, it's part of my nature. But I, I do agree, we have been really seriously concerned about this intersection at, and, and I think the comment made by the member of the public saying that we should have planned for it, we did plan for it. So when we did our master planning, we acknowledged that there would be, traffic signals would be needed as the base was developed. And as you know, the base went through a sync because of the tax situation in the market, and then now it's coming back online, and we acknowledge it. We have a development team meeting every week. We discuss this, it's on the agenda practically every week. But there are a couple of things happening, and I think if there's anything to be said, possibly what we're doing isn't put out there enough that people understand that we do care about it. So, um, because of the development team, which is head by Mr. Skender and everybody, everybody's on the development team, all the departments are. Uh, we have brought in Lieutenant Conti, who as everyone knows is our watchdog for every traffic issue in the city, especially around development. He has alerted us, the police department's concern with Goldsboro and Chosen Few Way. That's where the real emphasis has been. And so what's happened during that period of time, as the member of the public said, when, when you first plan a thing, you can't just implement it because there was no traffic. So now we've gotten to the point where we've, we've done the study necessary to warrant the traffic signal. And that is based on volume, and it's also based on, unfortunately, accidents that occur in the area. And this intersection of Chosen Few Way and Goldsboro and Lloyd has been involved from the planning board element is now eligible for signal. There's a couple of other things going on. The, the police department has identified that it would be, part of the problem is the, um, left turn into Costco, and that seems to be where there are many accidents. And so the city has reached out to and worked very cooperatively with Costco since last April. Costco went down to the New Jersey Department of Transportation to ask for an amendment to our highway access permit. The city of Bayonne has a highway access permit, can only have one permit. And so we've been working, Mr. Coffey was on the calls with the Department of Transportation, and they basically told us what has to happen. We have to agree with Costco, and they, they put a lot of conditions. They, they're not just going to give them a new entrance or 440, which would really help the situation. They have to show that they've looked at this, they've looked at that. And so our traffic engineer, John Pavelich, has been working with DOT forever, and, um, what basically comes up now is, is that we have a, we have a proposal to DOT to have a right-in, right-out, which would mean that a lot of the traffic that comes into Goldsboro wouldn't come in. It would get on and off Route 440. So that's one part of it. But DOT acknowledges that right-in might be easy, right-out might not be easy because we have a bridge. So there's a design issue there that has to be looked at. So what I'm saying to you, it's not a fait accompli that Costco will get the right-in, right-out, which will help us immensely, but it is a fait accompli that if the city supports it, which we are, they'll get the right-in, and that will eliminate the need for the left turn, which is the area where we are having the accidents. So we've, we've gotten that far in the process. Uh, Mr. Skender came up with a way to advance this. Uh, we are having a technical review committee meeting on January 8th with, with Costco, and Costco will come in with two alternatives. Uh, we will go through the TRC process, and then I believe I will be able to get permission to set up this follow-up meeting with DOT, and we will go down to DOT, hopefully, in January, and hopefully, um, they will give us direction. But it's not bad news for Ju, for Bayonne, either way, because we either get the right-in, right-out, which eliminates the whole problem, or they come in and they come out on Chosen Few Way. What did we just say? Chosen Few Way. Choose, Chosen Few Way will require the signal. In any case, it meets the criteria now, and what we're hoping is either that as a result of this action, Costco will be able to participate with us, but we also have more people on the development team. We have Mr. Baumann and Mr. Wicisala, who are working with the development team and Mr. Skender on trying to come up with a, a fair share cost arrangement so that we can actually get the funds to do the intersection. And we're working with, again, with, uh, with Lieutenant Conti on that, and we have cost estimates on what the signal will be, we have cost estimates on what the design will be, and we have a path forward. We acknowledge things take so much time, it's, it's so hard to even think of that, you know, how long it takes to get something when it might be an emergent condition, but there are people in this building, starting with the police department, their directors of safety, the council, the development team. Uh, there's no one who doesn't believe that as MOPB got developed, we would not have to do something, and, uh, we're putting a lot of effort into it, and I'm putting a lot of faith in that January 8th meeting as being the start of the solution. So, and if I can answer any other questions on that, I'd be happy to.
Okay. Uh, I was going to ask Mr. Skender to add a little bit about the TRC.
Sure.
But I've had so many different discussions between you, Mr. Skender, Lieutenant Conti, who I know you know very well, Mr. Solari.
Yes.
And, um, he actually gave me several different things that I don't really want to go into, I'll let Mr. Skender do, but.
Well, he does have, he does have suggestions that could.
He has these great suggestions.
He has suggestions that could be implemented now, and, uh, they could be implemented now, but they would be inconveniences to the public without the overall picture, but.
Well, so, so some of the things he, I'm not going to go on and, and eliminate, say exactly what he said, but by eliminating certain left turns and right turns.
Left turns, that's, it's the left turn.
Also with the businesses across the street, then we're actually able to redirect the traffic, and it should eliminate a lot of the, um, cautionary, uh, things that are going on right now where, that are causing some of these accidents.
The only, before I yield the floor to Director Skender, who has better overview than I do, I will say one thing. When, when Starbucks went in, we went to the state. The state's been very cooperative to us. This signal, aside from making the warrant, is out of the state's control now. It's on us, because it's off, it's off, Chosen Few Way is not. We will have to coordinate the signal with DOT with 440. But the, the, one thing I would say that, that Lieutenant Conti comments on, when we put in the left turn lane for, double left turn lane for Starbucks, we did the signal optimization there, and there will be no, there will be no other optimizations at that intersection because we've already done it. But that, that's a good point to remember, because sometimes they, well, you change the signal timing, it'll help. Well, we, we, we were granted that relief, um, when we put in the double, the double left turn. So DOT's been totally cooperative, as Jay can confirm. The mayor and he have an excellent relationship with DOT, and they're very cooperative with us. But this, right now, is on, we have, we have an approval for the signal, we have to figure out a way to finance it, and we're hoping through what Director Skilander's gonna inform you of, it's not gonna be a solution until we get a sign-off from DOT. So we're gonna go down there with options. So hopefully in February, we'll be back, because the meeting should be in January. We'll be able to say, hey, we went down, this is where Costco is going, and Costco can weigh in and see how they can, you have opportunities. They needed this relief, and hopefully it'll be an opportunity for us.
One other thing that was suggested was certain signage, which the city council would have to approve. If we do that certain signage, it would actually direct a lot of the cruise traffic down towards Pulaski Street, which would also take congestion away from.
And we also, we also have an estimate on that also, so I mean, I mean.
So there's good suggestions that came out of all this dialogue.
Yeah.
And it's just a matter of getting things done, and certain things unfortunately take a certain amount of time.
Yeah, it is unfortunate, but there's been a lot of direction. Director Skilander can update you on it. Thank you.
Yeah, Joe, if you wanna.
Sure, Council President. Ms. Mack, thank you so much. So just quickly, just on that with the TRCs, as Ms. Mack has alluded to, basically it's an informal meeting with the city and the city's professionals to kind of keep the ongoing conversations regarding, you know, the traffic issues on MOPB. And I know, Council President Lappalusa, you've been integral on, you know, these several month conversations on what to do with that. So what this informal meeting basically does is it allows our professionals the opportunity to, you know, work with Costco and several of the other developers to come up with the solution to, A, understand what they're actually, what Costco's looking to do on the two plans of, you know, making, you know, the, getting the exit on 440, or, you know, having a half-exit and the other, you know, exit on Chosen Few. It also will allow the opportunity then for our, you know, engineers and our professionals to, you know, kind of piece, you know, have one more piece to the puzzle, you know, in their, you know, to their knowledge on, you know, what other improvements have to be done, such as traffic signalization, other roads being built that haven't been paved but exist on paper. You know, so that's one of the things with this TRC that is gonna help with.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And Sue, thank you as well. It was very informative.
Before we move on, I mean, it was mentioned, and I'd like to just clarify a point. I, first, I have enormous faith in and respect for the work that Ms. Mack does, and the Council President, I know you have been dedicated to finding a solution in that area. My concern, as I stated at the time that it was passed, is this is reactive, not proactive. And now that we've eliminated, and mention was made of the master plan, and doing things with respect to our traffic plan as relates to the master plan, we also, in the last year, eliminated a 25-story limit in favor of a 50-story limit, which has now doubled the construction size that can be down there. And if there's going to be more of that supersized type construction, then we need to be ahead of the game, not waiting for the accident lists to pile up. Because I go down there frequently, and you do take your life in your hands. So I think the suggestions that were made by the Council President, the suggestions talked about here, are going to help, but they're going to help the situation that exists today. What happens now when construction's completed, if and when that occurs? And that's my concern. So that was one of the reasons why I was against it then.
We're not gonna get into words with you, but I would say that it's kind of proactive when there's no building built yet. So I'm not gonna get into the back and forth, but you could consider that proactive and not reactive, in my opinion.
Absolutely solve the problem.
Okay. But, but again, we are moving forward with good suggestions, and after January 7th, which is the TRC meeting, I think we'll be on the right path to fix it. So, does anybody else want to add anything to that? Okay, Madeline?
Next speaker is Mr. Dupay.
Thank you. How you doing, guys?
I can.
I'm worn out here. I've been doing three or four edits and everything involved. Everybody's stealing my thunder over here.
Wow.
This fellow over here.
Sorry.
I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm good following you, or if I was before, but I'm over here revising my notes and everything.
Just please give your name and address, please.
Oh, boy. It's my understanding that you're not allowed.
Give your name and address first.
Oh, no, Ken Dupay, 90 West 35th Street. Long time, my whole life, except for college and the Army. Am I correct, you really can't ask questions?
It's not a question and answer.
Okay.
Yeah.
So rephrase my questions a different way. It's in regards to, you know, the approved 50-story building. Now, I know you've talked with several members up here, I, you know, I'm not gonna call them, but I'm kind of disappointed I have left a text message twice last week, and a couple of members didn't return. So if we're gonna have dialogue with people. Secondly, I don't know why you guys have your email address on a website. I sent out a mass mailing a while back, nobody checks their email. You know, I guess you're older, because I know, nobody goes on Facebook.
I mean, I called you back the same day.
You did, other people did, so I'm saying, you know, three out of five did. On other occasions, they have. I find out now with the younger generation, you know, they don't even go on Facebook now, it's the phones, they don't even go on a computer, so I know everybody's adjusting to this whole new world here. Some, I was gonna ask a question, but I'm not, I'm gonna do it as a, I wonder. I know that young lady over there talked about the surveys were done prior.
So my suggestion would be, ask your questions if you want to wait till the end of the meeting. We'll wait, and you can ask anything you want. If we don't know it, we'll find out for you.
No, I would rather have other people here, I was trying to gather up the truth.
But during the public speaking portion, we want to keep it moving.
I'm winging it, I thought I was just gonna be reading here, but maybe it's better. I know a lot of times I've heard from people, they don't like to go on Facebook, what people say, this and that, but really, you're seeing what people are thinking in a community. And when you come to this 50-story buildings, I posted things on there, for instance, about speed cameras, and I've gotten people saying, no, no, and, you know, not 100%, you know, back and forth. But this is one issue, which, you know, this Costco situation, I don't have any person I've ever met Facebook, and I got a lot of followers, I have several different pages, business page, I have a Bayonne watchdog page, which the police send me to thank the reports of accidents, people are following that. You know, trying to be proactive for, big thing is safety, you know, so that's one. But, you know, I think you should go in there and see what people are saying, because I know you don't have time to walk around the streets and everything, but you gotta know, you know, you're supposed to be doing it well with the people, I think. All right, so anyway, I'm gonna put this, I wonder if a safety survey was done prior to the approval of the 50-story building? Was gonna be a question, but I'm just saying, I wonder. Secondly, if there was a survey done, I wonder if there was any report of accidents. Okay? Now, I'll share something with you. Excuse me, nasal analogy. I filed an open report on December 4th, which stated, quote, "I would like to know the number of accidents that occurred on Goldsboro Drive since January 1st, 2023." That's a little less than a two-year period. All right, based on the report I got, I actually had to call up the sergeant and say, is this a typo? And he verified it wasn't. This is the response, "Since 1-1, 2023, there have been 242 accidents listed with Goldsboro Drive as a location." I don't know if that surprises anybody. Can't answer that.
Can you repeat the number?
What?
Can you repeat the number?
242, 242. I was almost gonna get a shirt on here.
When you're done, I'll make some comments.
Okay, no, you will. Now, you know, based on this report, and if you look at statistics and lower probability, if everything stays the same, no more new stores, no more new buildings, in the next two-year period, you're gonna have 242 accidents, you know, plus or minus 5% to 10% margin of error. Anybody that studies statistics, lower probability, that's gonna be, I'll put money on it. Now, a lot of these things, you're waiting that are in your hands. I know Gary, you talked to me, it could take.
You have to try and wrap up your comments, please, if you could. We give everybody five minutes.
I'm sorry.
I'll give you a little leeway.
All right, last, all right, I'm, I'll come right to, I'll come to the end game. I think the one thing that you can do, that's in your power, is not to approve, to vote, re, whatever, revote. This 50-story building is not gonna do any good except cause more problems. And I thank you for voting against it.
You won't.
That's it.
So I spoke to Lieutenant Conti today. He told me that between October of the year before and this October, there was 24 accidents on Chosen Few, or it was 15 on Chosen Few accidents, nine on Goldsboro Drive, in the year from October '23 to October '24.
So this is wrong.
So I might be taking in Route 440, which is quite large, so I don't know where on Route 440 those other accidents possibly.
Well, the police listed as Goldsboro Drive.
But the lieutenant who's involved, he's the head of the traffic department, told me specifically today, there were 24 accidents on those two roads.
Well, who's right.
So I'm not saying you're wrong, but I don't know what they're included in if it's 440.
Well, maybe you wanted Jack, maybe you can have him instead of sergeant, and you and I can get together with them.
Yeah, I would love that. I would, and I would, I'd get together with you and the lieutenant. We do that quite often.
One accident and one life is two minutes.
I agree. I agree with you. Listen, we're acknowledging that there's an issue and a problem, but contrary to what anybody thinks, I think we are being proactive now.
No, you aren't being proactive, but you could stop this 50-story building.
Yeah.
You want it, but we don't need it.
There's some differences of opinion on the 50-story building. I voted for it also, and I voted for it because I wanted to see something unique. It's only a one-block area, it's not the whole base.
That's your opinion.
I get it.
What's unique.
I get it.
My sweatshirt is unique.
Yeah, but, but again, we're, we're talking about a lot of different subjects here right now. As far as the traffic is concerned, Mr. Solari and Mr. Dupay, I hope, you know, we'll find out a little bit more. My, what I'm going to do, and this council's going to do, is we're going to review it, and we're gonna have some changes on our own to be made before anything about a light or changing of those exits and entrances. So we're gonna be doing some things on our own that we know we can do. And I'm going to give everybody the suggestions that Lieutenant Conti gave us, so we can review it as a body here, as the elected body, and get some things done. And I'm hoping for next month. Ms. Medina?
Ms. Nadrowski.
Sharon Nadrowski, 126 Avenue Way. First, before, I should've said it before, my first time up, just want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Hopefully, everyone has a good 2020, 25. I'm gonna stay on topic, and I'm gonna find myself agreeing with Councilwoman Carroll again, because it's not proactive, because you guys, this council, everyone sitting up there, back in 2021, you did an occupancy study to justify the development not being halted when, when the big headline came out that we were gonna halt on development, till we did an occupancy study. Then the occupancy study, which I sometimes question the validity of that, but said it's 95% on all these new developments. So in 2021, you knew that all those buildings down there were at 95% capacity, but you didn't know that there'd be cars until today, when the accidents happened. I, I, I see, if you, if you did a study to find out the occupancy was there, we don't have any public transportation down there, so people are only getting around via vehicles. And if they have to walk, they're taking their life in the hands crossing that highway, which I see quite often. And it's very disturbing to see people with kids crossing 440. And that's been something that's in process way too long, too, the pedestrian crossways down there. And we've had fatalities on that, people crossing the street there. And so, and we keep, I keep hearing, referring to this, our master plan. We haven't followed our master plan at all. And, right, because a lot of this is not in the master plan. And then we can talk about, yeah, Mr. Carroll did vote no on some of them, but down in the first board, you voted to add, outside of the planning board, to add stories to the Cascam building. The 13th Street, we, you guys voted to add more additional stories onto that, 12th Street. So, you know, we pick and choose, which gets us good, you don't say yes to everything, pick and choose which ones. And to say we are passing a 50-story building because we want to do something unique, it's not a justification. It's a burden on our, but we haven't added any more police, right? Our police, the number of police has pretty much been consistent, the number of firemen has been consistent with all this new development, but they have a whole nother area with hundreds, we'll say that, of residents down there, that they're now responsible for keeping safe and patrolling that area, and responding to these 247 accidents, whether you want a 42. I don't want to say maybe they weren't exactly on Goldsboro, or maybe, but our cops are responding. And that's a direct correlation to the number of traffic that's developed from, from the, the houses that are down there. So to say you didn't see this coming, it's just, like, I don't know where it was, right? So I don't think this is reactive. You wouldn't even be addressing this today if you didn't know, because it was on Facebook, that Mr. Dupree did all this research, and everyone was outraged, and he was trying to get people to come to this meeting to address it. That's why you were very well-prepared today, because you did your homework, because you knew people were coming to ask the question. So that's, and also, just a follow-up on the scrap metal downtown, I know we kept hearing that people are gonna follow up, but nothing's been said, and it's continuing, and the noise is still continuing, just so all you know, that the noise is going, the dust and metal's flying, so nothing there has changed. Thank you.
And just so you know, it's not just from his Facebook, and it's not just from his call, I've been working on this for a long time down there, just wanted you to know. Ms. Medina?
Oh, seven is a bond ordinance for.
Excuse me one second, I'd just like to jump in if I may.
Sure.
Real quick, Mr. Nadrowski, I appreciate what you're saying, and everything that you're talking about is legitimate, okay? There are our concerns, but you made a statement on 2021, I was not here. So what I'm doing is, I was not here in 2021.
All right, wait, this is not gonna go back and forth. You made your statement, he's allowed to make his statement now.
Okay.
That's the way it works.
Alls I'm saying is the fact that I recognize everything that people are talking about.
Did that article though?
Oh, okay. Well, my point, I wasn't sitting on a dais at 2021, so I didn't vote on anything, that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
I would say we should both play the Lotto, though. To have a night where a Solarian and Nadrowski agrees with a Carroll is, it's a big moment.
Moving on. Ordinances for, proposed for introduction is a bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of a new water chiller and various additional heating and cooling improvements to the City Hall, appropriating $3,250,000. Therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3,95,200 bonds or notes to finance a portion of the costs thereof, and authorize, authorized in and by the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, and a resolution moved by the Council President fixing Wednesday, January 15th, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers, as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh, eight is a bond ordinance amending, in part, bond ordinance number oh twenty-four dash forty-two, adopted July 17th, 2024, providing for improvements to various roads to improve, in order to increase the appropriations, therefore, by $800,000 for a total appropriation of $3,500,000, to increase the authorized bonds and notes to be issued to finance a portion of the costs thereby, thereof, by $800,000 for a total debt authorization of $3,500,000, authorized in and by the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, State of New Jersey, and a resolution moved by the Council President fixing Wednesday, July 15th, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers, as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh, nine is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey, approving the redevelopment plan for the property located at 361-373 Kennedy Boulevard, which is identified as Block 262, Lots 7, 8, and 9, as shown on the official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, January 15th, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers, as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Resolution's moved by the Councilmember Perez. Ms. Weemer, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oops. What happened to oh ten? Out of order. Oh, 10 is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey, accepting the dedication of Avenue G and other roadway improvements, and a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez, fixing Wednesday, January 15th, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers, as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh, 11 is an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey, authorizing and approving the Title 39 Traffic Laws Enforcement for applicant, applicant redeVELOBER Bayview JV LLC, designated to redevelop a certain property located at 219 West Fifth Street, also known as Block 300.01, Lots 1.01, 3.01, 3.02, 3.03, 3.04, 3.05, 3.06, and 3.99, and parts of Block 511, Lot 1, pursuant to the city, to the planning board's application P-23020, and amending and supplementing Section 7-38.4 of the City of Bayonne's municipal code. And a resolution fixing Wednesday, January 15th, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers, as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh, 12 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter 7 Traffic, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, January 15th, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers, as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Resolution's moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh, thirteen is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 4, Licensing Registration and Business Registration. And a resolution fixing Wednesday, January 15, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Who'd like to move it?
Move it. Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh, fourteen is an ordinance amending the scattered site redevelopment project Phase 2, Site 14, Route 440 West redevelopment plan, to include interim temporary uses as permitted uses and to study Block 452.02, Lots 6, 7, and 9 to determine if the properties qualify as an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to NJSA 40A:12A-5. And a resolution fixing January 15, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Who'd like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
And consent resolution is moved by the council as a whole. It is a resolution ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C1 through C6. Any questions on the communications? And on the communications, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
And the officers' reports is a resolution ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolutions incorporated within to be adopted and to move by the council as a whole. Any questions on the officers' reports? And on the officer's reports, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Consent resolution is a resolution moved as a whole. It is a resolution ordering the following resolutions to be adopted. It covers CR1 through CR44. Any questions on the consent resolutions? On the consent resolutions, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
I have, I have-
Oh, you do, okay.
CR21 and CR41.
CR21 and 41. So on all the remaining consent resolutions, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
You said 41 and 21. CR21 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to take any and all actions necessary to execute any and all documents to exercise the city's second one-year option to renew the shared services agreement with the Bayonne Board of Education, whereby the city agrees to provide solid waste services to the Bayonne Board of Education, grammar and high schools for an amount of $345,453,45330. You have to come to the podium. Yeah, you have to come to the podium.
Sharon Nadroski, 126 Avenue, Bay. So I think two months ago, we had on the agenda to bring, to do the one-to-year extension of our current garbage contract, which it ends January 31st. We have not had that back on the agenda. So we currently, January 31st, we don't have a garbage contract. But yet, we're renewing our chair service agreement, which is essentially saying, we're going to operate, do your, your pickup under our contract, which we don't have. And we're committing to a, a cost on that, but we don't have a contract. So I'm not understanding how you can provide a service that you don't have a contract to provide. So it's going to be the same question on the next one, because that's providing the shared service with the housing authority.
We have a contract to December 31, 2024.
This, and that's in a couple of days?
The current contract runs through the end of this year.
Yes. So you'll have it renewed by then at some public meeting?
We'd have to have a special meeting or ratifying a firm after the new year. Right now, we have a contract through the end of this year. If it gets, if it gets to January 1st, that's an issue.
My point is that you're, you're entering into a contract-
Independent, independent of whether or not we have a garbage contractor, a contract with the existing provider.
I understand, Jay, I'm not, I'm going to, I'm not, I'm really going to just address this.
The resolution actually says it's subject to the entry into of a garbage contract.
Okay, well, we don't get the full thing in, in what you read. But I'm like, the council people, I would think that, you know, in good conscience or in ethics, like you're, you're passing something that you know you don't have the services. I know you can, because technically, just like technically, which really wasn't, before you always have to have a public hearing once you want to do something, but-
No, I'm going to correct.
But I'm going to say that if you-
If a public hearing-
Public comment.
Public comment, you only have to have public comments. A, a, a public hearing is required in connection with the passage of an ordinance at its second reading.
An action.
If it doesn't receive a second reading, there is no obligation to have a public hearing.
But you have to call for the vote to know you didn't have a second reading.
We just went over this. Technically speaking, yes, but you, in either case, you don't get, in either case, you don't get a public hearing.
Perfect, thank you. But technically speaking, like Jay just said, technically speaking, yes. So technically speaking, you gentlemen, and Jackie, you don't need a contract to enter into this, because you, you got an out. But would that be the prudent thing to do to enter into a contract?
We don't have, we don't have the budget passed yet for 2025.
Can I, can I finish what I was saying?
And we don't, we don't-
Can I finish my- So I'm just saying, I, it just, I'm, I'm not, I, I just find that a little odd that, and that's why I, you know, that you're passing a contract, two contracts that's saying you're going to provide a service that you don't have a contract to provide, starting that date, which is not that far away, right? It's, what's today, the 18th or 19th, I'm not even sure, 18th? Yeah, so I don't know. But that, I'm just letting, making you aware, I wanted to make sure that, you know, everyone understood what they were doing. Now you do, thank you.
So on CR21, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
So as I understand it, in both of these instances, and I'm quite familiar with reading contracts and, and agreements. So what CR21 requires and what we are agreeing to is to provide a service. No matter who it is, the vendor that we contract with, we are providing a service and are sharing that expense, in the case of CR21, with the Bayonne Board of Education, in the case of CR41, with the Bayonne Housing Authority. So we are committing to assisting two organizations that assist our residents. And so what we are agreeing to is that service agreement to provide, as far as CR41 is, to provide dumpsters for refuse services to our, our Bayonne Housing Authority buildings. And so it is with that understanding, whatever that cost is to us, we have agreed to a dollar amount of $60,000 towards the Bayonne Housing Authority, and $345,000 and change with the Bayonne Board of Education. So I am certain that if that dollar amount would change, which I'm certain it is subject to the renewal of the contract that Ms. Nadroski referred to, I'm certain we would have to come back and reissue our vote. So it is with that understanding that I vote aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
CR41 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to take any and all actions and any and all documents necessary to execute any and all documents necessary to exercise the city's second one-year option to renew shared services agreement with the Bayonne Housing Authority for the city to provide 20 10-yard dumpsters to be located at the Bayonne housing locations throughout the city for an amount of $60,000 payable by the Bayonne Housing Authority to the City of Bayonne. And on that one, which is moved as a whole, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R1 is authorizing and directing the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether the property located at 1037-1041 Broadway, which is identified as Block 45, Lot 20, constitutes an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. And it's moved by Council Member, Council President Lappalusa. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
I'd like to add an amendment. I think, I'd like to move that we authorize this to go to the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation with an analysis provided to the council of potential affordability options, affordable housing, workforce housing, et cetera, options.
Council President, may I? I represent the property owner, the potential developer of this site.
Just give your name and-
Michael Miselli, yes. That's, that's not permitted under the law, and I would not want any such attachment to that resolution. The resolution is permitted under the local redevelopment and housing law, and that is to study an area in need of redevelopment. If you want to do something separate about affordability, you can do that. But the law doesn't permit you to tag it on to a preliminary investigation. So if you want to do a separate resolution, that's up to the council. But if you want to do it as part of this process, you can't. And, and you can ask your council that, but that's, that's, we would object strongly to that, and I don't think it complies with the local redevelopment and housing law, thank you.
Mr. Skelander, did you want to talk about this memorandum? I think this is a proper time for you to speak about it now.
Sure.
So if you would like to make some comments after as well?
Sure, okay. So, so the council was provided a letter, memorandum drafted from our affordable housing planner, Rob Brian Slough. Within that memorandum, it did two things. One kind of defines kind of the broad parameters of your type of affordable housing and kind of a background on affordable housing within the state of New Jersey. With that, it goes into quickly the limits of what low-income housing is, what moderate, and then also what workforce housing is and kind of the standards pursuant to the HUD guidelines. Furthermore, what the, what the memorandum also does is it expresses then the next round of what's coming up for 2025 for our Round 4 obligations and kind of sets out a timeframe over the next, you know, year to year and a half on what actions the municipality has to do regarding its present need obligation, or in layman's terms, a rehab component. There's also another component, which would be a new build obligation, luckily for-
When you say rehab, you're saying rehabilitation of, of existing housing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so the existing current housing stock that we have, because we have been spending the past couple of, you know, months, you know, with Ms. Mack, Mr. Slough, and the administration, just working with, understanding the next round of COA obligations in regards to what, you know, Bayonne's need are. You know, we're one of the 21 towns that qualifies as an urban aid municipality, so we don't have a new build obligation. We will have a rehab, so current residents, you know, the current affordable housing stock will have to be, you know, rehabilitated. So again, what that memorandum does is just kind of lays out those concepts. Furthermore, you know, was also provided to, as a guidance to the council, were two public, published documents from the housing and urban development websites about the Jersey City metropolitan area which Bayonne is a part of. It's basically a HUD looks at, you know, geographical locations, they, and, you know, it kind of takes the biggest municipality there, they decided Jersey City does. And within there, they create, you know, certain data points for tracking on, you know, the area median income, which kind of helps with the formula of, you know, what constitutes, you know, workforce housing, low-income, moderate, and also some of the affordability standards. Within that, HUD has published data that the area median income for, you know, Bayonne, Jersey City, Hoboken, Harrison, Carney, North Bergen, Union City, Weehawken, the, the other town in Hudson County, is $100,000. And from there, they then create, you know, the different standards of, you know, workforce being between 80% to 120% of AMI. So for a single person, roughly about a little less than $75,000 a year there. You know, again, you know, I could go through the, the chart on that, but a family of four would, you know, for workforce housing, have to have a salary minimum of $107,000. Again, very large numbers in there, but we, you know, Bayonne, you know, is kind of subject to the luxury development that's occurring with, on the rest of the Gold Coast, within downtown Jersey City, Hoboken, Weehawken, and, you know, we're lumped in that area. So the second attachment also provided to was about the, what HUD studies is the fair market rent. So what they think roughly, you know, rent should be for the area. So it breaks them down by zip code, and then within, you know, Bayonne limit, you know, it states for an efficiency at 1,800 a month to, you know, one bedroom being 18, sorry, $1,830. You know, roughly with that, when you break down the, the numbers, between about 34, you know, $33, $34 a square foot on an annual average basis for there. So when we look at some of the analysis for that, quite frankly, you know, for workforce housing, it is our market rate. So, you know, based on these HUD guidelines. So for, you know, the, the other studies here on that, if, you know, because it's a HUD, workforce housing is a New Jersey HMFA guideline there, it's not really, you know, HUD-based. You know, the memorandum kind of goes quickly into that, but, you know, in looking at the data points here, you know, Bayonne, we are the affordable option within the area. That second page, it also lists the, the average rents in the, by zip code, has one other, you know, area that's slightly less on the rent, Carney, but just one of the two zip codes there. Otherwise, you know, we are, you know, on, at the second to lowest within the county as listed on that.
Second, would you clarify, second to lowest, what?
Market rents.
Market rents. So as it states here, so looking over this document that you sent, the, the package, which, if this is to qualify as the rent control study we asked for a year ago, which was to have a six-month limit, which is now six months overdue, providing this is that study, even a cursory glance demonstrates that there is a need in this town and in this state, definitely across the country, as has been called for by the federal government for the last year, and by me, to have workforce and affordability put forward. Further, to look at the efficiency apartments, which I assume is another word for studio apartments, it's $1,800, which, to put in real terms in the City of Bayonne, would be half a teacher's take-home pay per month if you're in your first seven years of your contract. So there's a need, and that, again, that's a studio apartment. And while this is good on paper to say, well, we, we've met our requirements, there's no need because we match the local area median income, there's no guarantee that the renter is locked in for that price once they move in. If you enforce a workforce housing component, then it turns this from a simple document, it, it takes it from being academic to being in place. So even if we say, well, $1,800 is a lot of money, why do it at all? Because it gives that person a little peace of mind. So Director, I know you provided the information, I appreciate it. With respect to this, the motion I made, would our law director weigh in on its efficacy?
Or, or the legality?
Legality.
Was the question.
As far as putting limitations on-
No limitations. All I asked for was that the study, the area need study, include an analysis of affordability.
Is that, so let Sue-
That's not, that's really not, that's really not within the ambit of what the planning board does.
Let, let Sue make some comments.
I'm only here, I'm only here to try. And I don't mean to make Mr. Miselli sit down, but just, you know, I'm your planner, but I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I have to concur with Mr. Miselli. The law says an area need study is done for specific reasons, and Mr. Booker could attest, we have more, we have more ANRs probably than many people in the area. It's, it's not, it's not eligible to be added. You examine the A criteria, and that's what you base it on. However, the reason I stood up is because next month, as Mr. Skelander has forwarded over to you, the Department of Community Affairs and the state of New Jersey requires that the city council, you all, look at the regulations and the numbers that they've assessed for Bayonne for our affordability for the next year. We have to have it in by January 31st, which is why Mr. Skelander asked Mr. Slough, our planner, our affordable housing planner. And at that point in time, I would say to you, you start a process from- And at that point in time, I would say to you, you start a process from January, it's in the memo, from January to June, there are numerous steps that have to be taken. I'm your affordable housing monitor, by the way, through 2025 and then 2028. Number of steps which include meetings with the council, meetings with the public, meetings with the planning board. It culminates in a fair share housing amendment to the master plan. We do it every, you know, so often. And I totally agree that this would be the place that you would then look for legislation for workforce housing to be considered, as other towns have done. But that's the, that is the place to look at that, and we are asking the council to get very involved in this, the state of New Jersey is, county is, we are. And I'm just saying to Neil, I've heard you, a lot of people have heard you, that affordability is an issue as towns develop, and workforce housing is very important for the people in Bayonne who work here who need affordable housing. But I really would just say, the area need, it's not, you're not, you can't amend that, that's state law. However, you have an opportunity coming up starting in January, which I hope for Mr. Skilander that you embrace, and we get to chat about it. And I believe that's kind of open-ended how you handle that. You do have to adopt a number. That has to be down to DCA in two days of your, two days within when you approve it. So you confirm the number, which is for rehab, and then, you know, I think you open up a dialogue for the next six months where you have a lot of opportunities to figure out where Bayonne's going to go in the next 10 years. These plans are for 10 years. The court, you know, we start with a year, you amend it, but the last one was 10 years ago. It's under the Hudson County Superior Court, and we had a lot of flexibility in terms of it, and I really believe that you'll have a lot of opportunity to create a really good affordable housing plan for Bayonne. And Mr. Skilander will be there for you.
I think we all have, all five of us have our own ideas about affordability, workforce housing. We've discussed this, Mr. Carroll, you and I personally discussed this several times, was not expecting you to add this on. Obviously, you did it as a surprise to all of us, so it's hard to do that, plus the legality now, we know we can't. Okay? So we're going to stick with what we have here. Mr. Drowsky?
You could say that, because you probably answered. I just have a question. I know that probably not, it's on the topic they were talking about, which really wasn't the redevelopment. Have we met our COA requirement? I know what we did them. I'm not, I haven't seen what is actually going to meet the requirement that's due now. What was the project?
No, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. Just because the court order, which Jay has in his file and is pretty familiar with, predates Mr. Skilander coming on. In 2015, we were required to submit a plan for Bayonne to the Hudson County Court. It said that we had 638 rehab units that were required. We had no new growth, just based on what was going on. And because this was a new thing for COA, went from being all handled down at DCA in Trenton to the courts, so the plan was adopted, and we were able to take a one-time credit for work that had been done back to 2005. And because we had done such a great effort when you were here with the Housing Authority, we were given a credit, and our obligation was basically 48 to 58 units, and that 48 to 58 rehab units was met. And they're on the website right now, if you go on in just in that right-hand corner of the first page, it's the midpoint monitoring report for COA, and it outlines which projects made that rehab. So we have met it, and that, but now the new report outlines our new obligation, and we will not have a credit. We'll be starting from scratch on that.
Okay. I'm going to, is that report going to be online, or do I have to open up the report that they got?
It's online right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's called midpoint. I don't know if it says COA, but it's in that right-hand column.
So the question I have is, the rehabilitation, can that be used from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Yes, it can. And I think there's been, I think what Mr. Skilander will tell you is that he's thinking about, we have a substantial amount of money in that and how we will obligate that.
And if you could just, before Mr. Skilander, explain to the public what the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is and how it gets funded from the developers and so on.
Yeah, so the Affordable Housing Fund, Mr. Skilander may have more on it even than me, but it was set up, it was set up by the state of New Jersey in reaction to the Mount Laurel decision, which was decades ago, and it was an attempt to have richer communities fulfill their need, and they had an obligation, but they also, then, we became a receiving district for other people's obligations at some point. This goes back many, many years. And what you do basically is that, we had a growth, everybody had a growth share, so every building you put up, the last building we had under the growth share was Parkview on the Boulevard. And so they actually had to either have it on-site, Harborview Point down at the base had to have it on-site, and/or you had to contribute. It's in our ordinance, by the way. Ordinance is still valid. It says that you have to contribute, you have to have certain unit, number of units on-site, or you can contribute into a housing fund, and there was a set rate. The rate was high. It was like $76,000 per unit, and it was based on COA, COLA. And so they put that money into the fund. The biggest project we funded was for milestones. We paid this council, paid over $1 million into putting affordable housing units there for disabled residents. And at that point in time, we had met our new growth, and therefore we were able to go into the rehab. And we have not funded a rehab project recently, but we do have sufficient funding in that fund right now. Most of our funding comes from non-residential fees, where it's assessed by state law at 2.5% of the value, and Joe Pancreon and Derek Orth from John Wick the Salads Firm and the tax assessor, they're very diligent about, you have to pay 50% when you come in initially based on that, and then before you pick up your CO, you have to pay the other 50%. So we have this real opportunity as we hit this next, this tenure that we're going into to develop a program that will be able to, you know, really support different initiatives and that. That's all on the council level. It's policies based on the council.
Thank you for explaining that to the public as well.
It's working with everybody.
Yeah. Mr. Skilander?
So, Council President Lapalusa just to.
Hold on, before you go, let's let Juan ask a question.
Sure.
Can you define fair market value?
Fair market value is, again, the average rent on what people are supposed to, you know, willing and able to pay. Again, for how HUD looks at, they do their studies based off the census, collect data in that, you know, those points and come up with, you know, data to publish those findings. And so the attachment of that is the 2025 fair market value rent list for the Jersey City Metropolitan HUD area.
So if we force these developers to give us workforce, workforce housing, do they pay their market saying fair market value, or do they have to?
Well, if we, if the council, you know, makes a decision to put in for workforce housing and require that, a couple of things happen with that. Obviously, the market is going to dictate, you know, the price. As I've been saying, that Bayonne is the, one of the affordable options within Hudson County and the Jersey City Metropolitan Area, our affordable, you know, our workforce housing is our market rate. So the developer, you know, may get a better benefit depending upon the pilot law on that. So they, you know, because they will be, some affordability controls with it could be subject to Title 55K on the pilot instead of the 40A pilot. So with that, again, basically, you know, if you mandate to do workforce housing, the, you know, one of the fears is you may actually be giving the developer a better benefit because of the financial terms.
So would it be legal to do that, or would it be illegal?
I mean, look, it's legal to do that. The council does have the ability to require and mandate it. It's just, you know, the market is basically stating that, you know, we are the affordable option, you know, for workforce. If you want to have low-income and, you know, moderate housing, that's other conversation, but that's not, again, the past couple of months' discussion on workforce housing. Sure.
Ted, I have a lot of questions about it, so I don't, I'm not prepared today. And I did say that we would revisit this, Mr. Carroll. I know, I spoke to you recently, last week as a matter of fact, about this. And I wanted to be able to ask my question to some of the professionals. You're saying it gives a developer a discount, but to mandate that all development gives a percentage, I don't know if that's necessarily how I want to go, because I need to weigh out the pros and cons of all that.
Well, within the next couple of months, you'll have that topic of conversation, and again, kind of with the pilot law and also some of the affordable controls for it. Again, it's improper, it's illegal for the state, sorry, for your municipality to collect Section 8 vouchers under the pilot. You know, the law was changed and, you know, restrictively prohibits that that pilot, that that payment actually be deducted from the pilot. So, you know, look, affordable housing with the regulations that are set up is a very complex conversation, you know, topic here, but we'll be discussing this, you know, over the next, you know, year or so.
And then in one of the conversations I had with you just recently, and you mentioned about the rehab, I would like to set an amount for the rehab and see what's left over, to see what my options are to provide more affordable housing.
Agreed.
In another way, whether that's through workforce, or we say, purchase a building with housing, you know, I don't know. I want to explore all those options, but I want to do that soon. And I know this month is, you know, would be a good time, especially the beginning of the year.
Agreed. So back to the memorandum quickly on that. So it kind of lists, you know, one of the timelines. So we, the council will have to adopt a, its housing plan by June 30th of 2025. So like I said, over the next couple of months, you know, we're going to have a lot of conversations as Ms. Mack stated in front of the council, in front of the planning board with this. As for the rehab, you know, component of that, that probably is going to be a big portion of our, the use of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund there. We still have to do our analysis of, you know, what we have currently. I asked our finance department to check what's in the trust account. It's a little over $13 million. So that's, you know, a very large number, you know, through efforts, you know, funded by, you know, as Ms. Mack was stating, the non-residential affordable housing fee of 2.5%. So as UPS comes online, as these other bigger warehouses that have been, you know, built, you know, they're paying into this fund to help us, you know, cover our obligation, you know, by the state.
Thank you very much. You're very, very informative, Ms. Mack. Thank you also. Very, very informative, and we appreciate all the info.
Thank you.
Okay, now, there is a motion on the table from Mr. Carroll. Is there a second? Okay, that is enough. So on R1, Mr. Booker.
As it's written.
As it's written.
As it's written. Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Well, in the interest that it will come back and we'll get a second look at the plan, I'll vote aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
And Mr. Carroll, one other thing. Nobody on this council has said, absolutely not, we're not doing this, we're not doing that. We're trying to explore the best options that we think. Everybody has different opinions, but obviously there's a legality issue to add what you wanted in there. So with that, I'm going to say aye, the way it's written.
Okay. R2 is authorizing and directing the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation to determine whether the property located at 18-22 East 15th Street, which is identified as Block 253, Lots 39 and 40, constitutes an area in need of redevelopment and authorizing the planning board to prepare a redevelopment plan for the said property pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law.
Would the director speak to this? Is this a business, going down 15th Street, is that, it's a wide, looks like a wide parking area attached to a carriage house, is my thinking the right area?
Yes.
And so the homeowners requested this?
The property owners have requested this, yes.
And it's R1 or it's commercial?
It's R2.
It's R2.
And it's also subject to the H Street, it's actually split zone because it's part of the H Street rehabilitation plan.
Okay. R2 is moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. Booker, will you second? On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
I'll vote aye, but I would caution, and I know we have a member here that's on the planning board, this is a very thin street with very limited parking. It is, it is a tough road to hoe down there, and so whatever the planning board is going to do, I would hope they would keep in mind, this is a very tight area.
And a couple of dead-end blocks off of that, too.
Exactly right, yeah. Several dead-end blocks that are even thinner than the block.
Yeah.
Just to make my council member aware, the fact that the council, the planning board is aware, and we do take into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
And your vote, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
R3 is designating the property located at 657-663 Broadway, which is identified as Block 158, Lots 22, 23, and 24, as shown on the official tax map of the city, as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment, and authorizing the preparation of a redevelopment plan for said property pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. It's moved by the council president. Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
R4 is designating the property located at 935-939, which is identified as Block 85, Lot 23, as shown on the official tax map of the city, and authorizing the preparation of a redevelopment plan for the property pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
R5 is designating J. Parr Realty LLC as the redeveloper of the property located at 21-2935 and 37 West 25th Street, and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement. Would you like to move it?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
R6 is designating 173-179 Avenue F LLC as the redeveloper of the property located at 173-179 Avenue F, which is identified as Block 4, let's make sure we got the right number, I think this was the one in question. Block 442, Lots 6, 7, 8, and 9, as shown on the official tax map, and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement.
So move.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
R7 is designating 15 East 23rd Street LLC as the redeveloper of the property located at 15-21 East 23rd Street, which is identified as Block 198, Lots 1 and 2, and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement.
So move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Ms. Perez, Mr. Perez. Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
R8 is authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with 111 Avenue F Partners Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 107-111 Avenue F and 86-92 East 22nd Street, which is identified as Block 456, Lots 7, 8.01, 8.02, 8.03, 9, and 10.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. Lapalusa?
Aye.
R9 is authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with John and Mary Ann LLC for the property located at 456-461 Avenue C, which is identified as Block 219, Lots 21.01.
So move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R10 is authorizing a redevelopment agreement with Chanty 5 Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 562-568 Broadway, which is identified as Block 184, Lots 1, 2, and 3.
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R11 is authorizing a redevelopment agreement with the Noy Residence Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 1099-1105 Avenue C and 66 West 54th Street.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R12 is authorizing the wa, waiving part, part of the amended site plan and subdivision application fee schedule.
Before we vote, I ask Mr. Skelender to come up, because we had some questions at the caucus about this.
Sure. So, a little background first on this. Under the MLUL, the city is allowed to ask for reasonable fees to cover administrative expenses, basically any salaried employees, you know, that are reviewing the application. So, anyone in planning zoning, myself, Ms. Mack, for that. So, for this application, you know, specifically, we have an ordinance that kind of, that lays out, you know, the different fees. So, for, in this unique case, this is one that may run afoul of the law. After discussion with our special redevelopment council, you know, Mr. Wissja Scala, basically, you know, of how we got here, Bayview submitted a site plan and paid an application to the tune of about $200,000. Because they came in on a preliminary, on a final site plan application, and then, in order to help on, do an amended site plan application, which in effect was to redo, you know, a subdivision to help the road networks, nothing, you know, substantial, you know, any buildings, you know, new apartments. Like, this was really more of a road network. Of how our ordinance currently written, the amended fee would be half of the original fee, so $100,000. So, what we're asking for, with the advice, you know, at, really at the direction of our, you know, special redevelopment council, is that, you know, really for a 15-minute hearing, that the $100,000, the amended site plan be waived. They've already paid about 29, a little over $29,000 in that, you know, which I think is, again, fair to cover, you know, the administrative costs, you know. I will also say that, you know, because of the statute, and we've had the conversation, that the fees aren't there to, you know, really generate, you know, money for the city. As much as I'd, you know, love to say that, the statute doesn't really permit it. So, you know, upon the, you know, advice of our legal counsel, that's why we're, you know, putting this resolution out there, asking that the $100,000 be waived.
Is it based on a, on a scale?
Yes, it's based on the scale of their original site plan application. So, they paid $200,000 already to the city.
But now, they've done something else that on the scale equates to $100,000.
Anytime they would come in now for an amended site plan, it would be $100,000.
But I think what you said was the de minimis nature of the site plan amendment is what brings us to...
To where we are.
We can't really in good conscience say, as I said to you, before Mr. Carroll, the statutes are not designed for us to profit. It's, it's supposed to reimburse the municipality for the...
Cover costs.
Causes, costs that are attendant to a particular matter. In this case, they're coming in, they did submit a full-blown application, they did everything they had to do, then there's a minor change that really facilitates the overall project. And our special redevelopment council has said it's a little bit aggressive and maybe almost like a taking to ask them to spend another $100,000 to make a minimal change to a plan that was just approved. And they paid $29,000 or...
Yes, and they paid $29,000. And again, back to the administrative part of the fee, it's to cover City Hall employees, you know, for their review and time. Our outside consultants are paid by the escrow, which this has nothing to do with. So, you know, that fee, you know, their bills are paid out of the escrow account. So, you know, we can't even say that, all right, this is to cover, you know, our lawyer's fees, because that's paid out of escrow.
So, moving forward with any changes that they're going to make moving forward, what, is there a formula? Is it $29,000? Is it a smaller portion? How are we going to figure this out if there's more changes?
Well, for, for this, as they would, you know, depending upon what the plan would be, if they come in for an amendment, you know, we have to review what the changes are. So, currently, our engineer reviews our site plan fees. And again, that's then recommended to our planning board or zoning board secretaries. And then, you know, Ms. LaShancy then, you know, tells the developer, here's the fees in order to process the application. I think this is one of those unique situations here where, you know, even if we try...
Well, it's based on the original application.
Application, yes.
You said 50%.
50%. So, regardless, if they come in and let's just say the changes are substantial, then we're going to not ask this ever again. It's going to be $100,000. So...
Again, I'm just looking for a measure of substantial. So, out of curiosity, what is the change now?
Well, the change was to better effectuate the, the road network. So, with the Dollar Tree property there, that the roads would connect into that property. That was the subdivision part of this.
Does any of that let out onto A, or is that internal?
Yes. So, they would also have, so, the other thing, too, just to be mindful of regarding the traffic, there is a traffic and a fair share obligation in the site plan for Bayview. Bayview, Gamal, Nassarima, the film studio, all have to contribute to this traffic light. Whether it be at the intersection where 440 and the Bayonne Bridge let off onto Avenue A. So, Ms. Mack's been integral with working with the Port Authority to get that done. And, you know, all the developers have agreed to their fair share cost of that.
Ms. Mack, you want to add to that?
I just wanted to clarify. We've been working with the Port Authority for a couple of years to put a nice signal out there. That's all done. Dollar Tree had one driveway, A&amp;P had a second driveway. During the analysis with the Port Authority, it was suggested that we combine the driveways. They're right next to each other, and that's why we're doing a site plan amendment. It's to move, put one driveway instead of two driveways. And so, it seemed a little unfair to pay a huge fee for, to do that, since it was, it came out of cooperative effort to make our signal, which they are required to pay for, work. And Mr. Reichel, Mr. Skelender's meeting today clarified, no harm to the city in terms of fees. All fees have been paid. All fees for the city professionals have been paid. So, I would definitely recommend you take Mr. Skelender's suggestion.
And too, I, I just have a quick question, Joe, Director Skelender. So, do we, obviously, we've reviewed that. And do we not see any additional risk or any potential by combining those two driveways with the influx of, of residents or, or retail, you know...
Our engineers think...
Patrons?
Our engineers have looked at that, and they, it's in their opinion that, you know, this helps the, the flow of traffic, so that there's not one entrance and exit, you know, currently at the, between North Street, that there's other means of ingress and egress there. It also helps with our, you know, first responders, you know, fire trucks, you know, having more access to the property.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
And then, the other thing, just to also add to, to this, that, you know, Mr. Selly reminded me for this. One of the, one of the conditions of, you know, for the amended site plan is that they actually agree to this traffic light that they have to then fund.
So, this, this request was not necessarily their request. It was rather a suggestion made to us by the Port Authority in which we then had to pass it along for them, for them to incur these costs and, and change their site plan.
In layman's terms, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes.
Actually, I'm kind of, Sharon Nadrowski, 126 Avenue A. I'm kind of shocked, because I knew this plan. I went to the planning board meeting, I think it was at the high school, for some reason, when they discussed this. It was moved there for some reason, I don't remember. And this was the plan, to have the two, the driveways combined. And I talked about it then, and there were, the light wasn't yet in the thing, because there's still going to be two. The A&amp;P one's going to be there, and this one's going to be a little close. That was my suggestion last time. I think they're really close. But what I'm up here is, are we going to be proactive or reactive in this? Because you said that the light was approved. Are we going to have to wait till 900 people move in there before we put it in?
No.
Or are we going to put it in anytime soon?
No, before any construction is done, the light will be installed.
That's good, because it needs a light there when all the trucking companies went in, and no light is still there. And the speed bumps, they're already flat from all the trucks.
Just to confirm for Sharon, the city has approved it. We're waiting for Christian Booker just to approve the, the cabinet. That's, make sure that we'll be able to maintain the cabinet, and then, we're ready to do installation. We, we're working with the Port Authority. We discussed that today. Just need some, the insurance element. We have to go on to Port Authority property when we put it in. Discussed it, development team, Mr. Skelender discussed it with Mr. Baumann this morning. I would say we're within three months of actually installing it.
Thank you.
Who'd like to move it?
Some move.
And a second? On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
I would like to just say that the way it was explained to me in moving forward, waiving that fee, I vote aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Given the explanation here tonight, and the pros potentially outweighing the cons, I vote aye. But I have a concern about this type of thing going forward. And we either have a scale for a reason, or we don't. And so, we need to make sure we stick to it.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
I was happy with the 50% explanation of the original application fee, and that this will be a one-time thing. And again, the council has oversight on this to vote. So, if we feel something is not absorbent, and even if somebody else does, we still have the oversight to vote it down if we want. And with that, I'll vote aye.
R13 is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with the Hudson County Improvement Authority for solid waste disposal services for a period of one year, commencing January 1st, 2025, for an estimated amount not to exceed $4,100,000 for solid waste disposal and tipping fees.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R14 authorizes the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with John El Sistino, Esquire for the Lord's Department, for professional legal services to act as the rent control board attorney for a period of one year, commencing January 1st and ending December 31st, 2025, for an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R15 is in a contract with Triad Advisory Associates for consulting fees related to the planning and implementation of the city's county develop, community development, development block grant program for a period of one year, commencing January 1st through December 31st, 2025, for an amount not to exceed $110,000.
Some move.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R16 is a resolution authorizing payment to She International in the amount of $134,063.06 for the Generex ACS security system for the municipal, municipal building.
Some move. Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R17 has been withdrawn. R18 is authorizing payment to She International in the amount of $58,126,066 for security system for the police training and gun range.
Some move. Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R19 authorizes payment to Safewear Inc. for the Bayonne Department of Public Safety Emergency Radio Maintenance Agreement for a period of one year, commencing January 1st, 2025, in the amount of $250,000.
Forward. Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mr., Ms. Weimer? I'm losing count. I'm tired, and I'm getting cold. Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R20 authorizes payment to She Inc. for the citywide radio communication system for a period of one year, commencing January 1st, under New Jersey State Contract Omni Contract 440008468, in the amount of $39,025.
Some move. Second.
On that one, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
R21 authorizes payment to Safewear in the amount of $45,454.55 for the citywide public safety camera maintenance plan for a period of one year, commencing January 1st, 2025, under state contract Omni Contract 440008468.
Some move. One second. There's, there's a typo on that. That should be January 1st, 2024.
24.
For the current year.
Okay. You did mention that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Who'd like to move it?
Some move.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty-two is awarding the contract to Need Freaks Cleaning Service for cleaning service for the police department for a period of one year commencing January first, for in the contract amount of forty-four, forty-five thousand two hundred dollars and four cents.
So, move.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
A lot to go. R twenty-three is executing an agreement with Timothy Moriarty to act as chief municipal prosecutor for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty twenty-five, for an amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand dollars, and an agreement with Stephen R. Hummel, Esquire, to act as the alternative municipal prosecutor for the period of one year for an amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand dollars, and an additional agreement with Lanzi Belzir, Esquire, to act as an alternative municipal prosecutor when prosecutors aren't available for a period of one year.
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Twenty-four. Now they're out of order. R twenty-four authorizes the agreement with Clark, Canton, Hint for professional planning services as co-op on affordable housing for a period of one year commencing January first, for an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
So, move.
Second.
On R twenty-four, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty-five authorizes the agreement with Consultant and Municipal Engineers LLC doing business as CME Associate for professional engineering services as the in-house engineer in connection with the developers and redevelopers for a period of one year commencing January first and ending December thirty-first, for an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars.
Seven.
Second.
On that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty-six is an agreement with CME Associates for professional engineering services as in-house engineer on behalf of the city for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty twenty-five, for an amount not to exceed one million two hundred thousand dollars.
So, move.
Second.
On that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Twenty-seven is an agreement with Yakker Glot LLC for professional legal services as a municipal court public defender for a period of one year commencing January first, for an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Forward. Second.
On that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty-eight is an agreement with Inglesino Webster, Witcher, Scala, and Taylor LLC for professional legal services as redevelopment land use attorney on behalf of the developers and redevelopers for a period of one year commencing January first, for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
So, move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R twenty-nine is an agreement with Inglesino Webster, Witcher, Scala, and Taylor LLC for professional legal services as redevelopment land use attorney on behalf of the city for a period of one year commencing January first, for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Move it. Second.
The firm went through a rebranding, it's Inglesino Taylor, if that matters.
Say again?
The firm went through a rebranding, it's Inglesino and Taylor.
Inglesino and Taylor?
Yes. Webster and Witcher, Scala were, you know...
They just did a rebranding, it makes it a little bit simpler for their emails. Webster left the firm.
Yes.
And Witcher, Scala is impossible to spell no matter how long you know.
But I can pronounce it. So, on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
I just want to say I've been spelling Witcher, Scala before Neil Carroll was born, so...
Before?
I vote aye.
R thirty is an agreement with McManaman and Scotland and Bauman LLC for professional legal services as special redevelopment land use council in connection with developers and redevelopers for a period of one year commencing January first, for a total contract amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Who'd like to move it?
So, move it. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R thirty-one is an agreement with McManaman, Scotland, and Bauman LLC for professional legal services as special redevelopment and land use council on behalf of the city for a period of one year, for a total contract amount of fifty thou, I believe that is an...
Move it.
Wait, that should be, that fifty, fifty thousand dollars, sorry about that.
I moved it.
Okay, and just for a second, and on R thirty-one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R thirty-two is designating Chason, Lamparello, Malone, and Capuzzo, and Dorkin and Dorkin LLC, McManaman, Scotland, and Bauman LLC, and Inglesino, Taylor, Attorneys at Law, as qualified panel counsel for a period of one year, commencing January first.
Move it.
Second.
R thirty-two, on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R thirty-three authorizes the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with McManaman, Scotland, and Bauman to act as special bond counsel in connection with the city's water sewer utility for a period of one year commencing January first, for a total contract amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So, move.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R thirty-four authorizes an agreement with Delsworth, Paxton, L L P, to act as bond counsel for a period of one year commencing January first, for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Move it. Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R thirty-five is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with USA Architects, Planners, and Interior Design, L L T D, for professional architectural services as the city's architect in connection with the municipal, with municipal work for a period of one year commencing January first, for a total amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weemer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
R thirty-six is also with US Architects and Planners and Interior Design for professional